Order on November 24th, 2020. Thanks to everyone for joining us and we're going to get started and I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight, please?
Yes, I would be happy to. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, I'm reminded today that we are all made in your image and that you love each one of us. And I pray that as city officials, as citizens of Paducah, as family and friends, we will remember that and we will look for those who need special comfort, special help, and that we will be an extension of your love and care, just bless us as a community. I'm also reminded that there are many suffering in our community right now from the virus, from overwork, from stress. And I pray that you will be in each one of those situations, bringing your mercy, your comfort, your love, and that again, we will know when we need to step in and help someone there. Be with those who have lost loved ones, who are facing a critical diagnosis, that you would give them comfort and peace. Use our healthcare providers to perform miracles in these situations. We're thankful for new treatments. We are thankful for the hope of the vaccine and we pray that we will be ready when it is ready and that it will put an expiration date on this pandemic. We also pray for unity in our country as we get ready to transition governments. We pray that we would all be gracious and kind, humble, wise, and discerning as we seek to be one community, be one country, be one state, Father. We pray that you would use us to be a vessel of peace and joy and happiness. Again, we're reminded that this is Thanksgiving week and we are grateful, Father. We are grateful that you are sovereign, that you are in charge, that you love us, that you care, that you provide. Let us look to you for direction, for guidance. And Father, thank you for the many, many blessings in each one of our lives. And one of those blessings is living in Paducah, Kentucky. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I will, Madam Mayor. We'll count down from three, two, one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the Assistant City Manager here with us tonight, Michelle Smolin. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
There are no additions or changes to the agenda tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board member requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for separate discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Two minutes for the November 10th, 2020 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file document Personnel Actions: A Municipal Order Accepting the Donation of Real Property Located at 1331 Broadway to the City of Paducah and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Deed of Conveyance for Same.
Excuse me, I make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Agreed.
Thank you. Call roll, please, city clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And I'll ask the city clerk to read item 2A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled: A Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Tolling Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC and JSC Terminal LLC, Doing Business as Midwest Terminal.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of this item tonight? Rick, do you want to kind of give an overview so that the public knows what we're talking about tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Commissioner. As we all know, there is the siltation accumulation along the Ohio Riverbank and this is impacting a local business of whom is working with us, it's Midwest Terminal, working with us as we're working through the regulatory process of getting permission to dredge the material. Meanwhile, they are impacted and they're working very, very closely with the City of Paducah. However, in the event that they may need to have a claim with the city, there's a timeframe for which that may occur and they don't wish to file a claim with the city. However, they don't want to lose their opportunity if it may need to come to fruition. Therefore, they've asked to have a tolling agreement with us that would extend their opportunity should we be unsuccessful at anything in the future for the dredging. And that's what we're working on now. It's just we're working through the regulatory process. And I've got David Kelly here with KKHB to answer any questions that you all may have regarding the tolling agreement.
Thank you, Rick. I think we've all agreed after having this conversation for multiple months that this is us being a good partner with our business that is struggling and making sure that we're providing the opportunities necessary to clean up a situation that is out of our control, but that there are some good solutions for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments specifically on this item tonight? No? Okay. David, do you have anything you want to add to the conversation? I know we've talked about this with you in executive session and...
Yeah, it's a fairly standard agreement. The city's not waiving any rights, any defenses. All we're doing is agreeing with Midwest Terminal that we won't assert a statute of limitations while we're trying to work this out. And the statute of limitations aren't, I mean, I think they would probably have to sometime next summer before a reasonable statute would even be in play. So, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just an agreement basically out of abundance of caution not to force anybody to file a claim that the otherwise wouldn't want to file to begin with.
Great. Well, I know we've been very successful, Rick, I know your team has, on getting funds from FEMA and finding ways to pay for things like this. So hopefully that becomes the outcome.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. If there are no other questions or comments on this item, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right, up next we have Commissioner Watkins.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I have a municipal order approving the proposed artwork design for the water tank located between mile markers 11 and 16 on Interstate 24 in McCracken County at the request of Paducah Water and McCracken County Fiscal Court. Whereas Paducah Water is the owner of a water tank located between mile markers 11 and 16 on Interstate 24 in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky. And whereas McCracken County, the county desires to undertake the design and painting of new artwork on said water tank. And whereas Paducah Water is agreeable to the painting of the artwork in accordance with the terms of the Agreement for Artwork Installation between the County and Paducah Water, the agreement. And whereas pursuant to the requirements of the agreement, Paducah Water and the county have requested written approval of the artwork from the Paducah City Commission. And whereas the city now desires to approve said artwork designed for the water tank, now therefore be it ordered by the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Section 1, the City of Paducah hereby approves the artwork designed for the water tank generally located between mile markers 11 and 16 as attached here to and made part hereof Exhibit A. Section 2, this order should be in full force and effect from and after the date of its
All right, I think it's my understanding, Commissioner Watkins, that you, I know JW's on here, Judge Clymer is on here. Have you guys coordinated who's speaking in what order?
Yeah, Judge Clymer was going to be the main presenter, so I think it'd be appropriate that he go first and then JW Cleary can follow him and then we can make some comments. I'd like to make a few comments myself before we actually vote. Judge Clymer, your own.
All right. Well, first let me thank you for giving me the time to address this. I'll briefly address it in really two parts. First, the importance of the unity message. Second, why it's important in my viewpoint that the city affirmatively supports this project. Of course, our country is experiencing great racial divides. We see white and black divisiveness, including allegations of racism in our law enforcement agencies constantly in the national news. Locally, McCracken County hosted meetings between representatives of the black and white community to discuss racism. The questions are, is it present? Is it systemic? Why is it present if it is and what can we do better? The talks were very beneficial, reducing action items for achieving better relations between black and the white community. All the time meanwhile Confederate flags, very large Confederate flags fly in Confederate Park alongside I-24 out in the Reedland community. I understand that some 40,000 cars pass by those flags daily. The park is private property, as we know. Their display is protected by our constitutional guarantee of free speeds and there's nothing that we can do to get them to take them down. So two important, important points here. First, many, if not most, people believe, I believe, that the Confederate flag represents racism. Others, including the Confederate boys, insist that there is no racism message. They believe that the flag only honors Confederate veterans of the Civil War. So while some view the Confederate flag as race neutral and others perceive it as a symbol of racism, even of white supremacy, no matter the belief of those who fly the flag, nor the message that is intended by flying the flag, the perception of bigotry is sufficient justification, I believe, for us to act. So I disagree with those that say because we're not a racially biased community, there's no need for a racial unity message. The Confederate flag to many people suggests anti-black sentiment, to say the least, and we have a duty, I believe, to assure that. Some folks have suggested the message should represent a broader sense of inclusiveness, a message that we are supportive of all races, all religions, all choices, all preferences, and more. And of course, that's true. But whatever the message spoken by the Confederate flag, whether racist or neutral, it has nothing to do with religion, sex, gender identity, or other benefits or beliefs. To broaden the message is, in my view, to weaken or even obscure it. Second, regardless of the intended message pronounced by the flying flags, passersby do not know that the park is privately owned, that it is not government-condoned speech, and so they justifiably question whether our community is racist. Do we not believe that whether intended or not, the message perceived by tens of thousands of people passing through our community daily is tarnished to some degree or another? The unity message displayed on the Paducah Water Tower across the I-24 interstate from the flags would be recognized, I believe, as government property that displays a message of racial unity and patriotism. Both the city and the county annually spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless hours to promote a positive image of our community. And the city and the county work very closely together and we have each other's backs on doing that. Can there be any doubt that this unity message will further those objectives? And it's at no cost to the taxpayers funded completely by donations. Now, Paducah Water Works has asked the city to authorize the use of the water tower for the message. Why did they ask the city? I think there's two really strong reasons. First, the city owns the tower. Certainly, the water board should not paint a message on a tower it does not own. Second, Paducah Water is not a political body. It oversees the selling of water. The unity message is a political message. It's a policy message. It's clearly the role of the elected leadership of government to decide on and carry out policy and political matters. It is decidedly not the role of an unelected board of water sales managers. And that's why they asked the city to decide this. You are the elected leaders of the city. You appointed them to sell water. In my view, Paducah Water is entirely correct in seeking city approval or disapproval of this project. They recognize they have no business and seek no business to make decisions such as this. The city states that it will not approve or disapprove the project because it wishes to not micromanage Paducah Water. Very respectfully, I have extensive training and practice in logic and reasoning as a lawyer and a retired judicial branch judge of 23 years. I just cannot follow the logic that giving Paducah Water the authority it asks for is in any way micromanaging Paducah Water. Paducah Water, a non-political body, asked the city, the political body, and the owner of the tower, to decide this. Respectfully, in my view, if the city chooses to not decide this issue when asked by Paducah Water, it will abdicate its responsibility to determine policy to decide a political matter. Not only will it not perform a core mandate of an elected governmental body, but it passes its duty to a non-political, unelected body whose mandate and only mandate is to treat, store, and distribute drinking water. To man, to micromanage is to control every part, however small, of an activity or enterprise. Paducah Water is asking the city to say yes, to make the policy decision. If the city agrees and says yes, it is not controlling or micromanaging Paducah Water. Quite the opposite, it's giving Paducah Water control. It's saying, Paducah Water, we will not stand in your way. So in closing, I must say that I do not understand the city's reluctance to affirmatively support this project. To me, the time has never been so ripe for a community to support racial unity. The project will cost the city nothing in money, time, or effort. It'll be a great outcome at zero cost. And I want to emphasize that I have no doubt, absolutely none, that each of you support the idea of black and white unity. But I fear that if you do not demonstrate that support, the unintended consequence, the unintended message will be the opposite. I just ask that you simply agree to go ahead, give the Paducah Water the authority as they request to do this project and then let's get it done.
JW, ready?
Thanks, Judge Clymer. To the mayor and all the commissioners, the only reason why I hadn't got involved in this particular situation is because I thought it was a done deal because everybody that I've talked to said that they didn't have any problem with it. I did have one person to tell me that he felt like that maybe some adequate part was involved, but I tell you, you know, looking back, I thought about all day today what I would say to you guys and girls, but, you know, we had our national state NAACP convention here in Paducah, Kentucky last year. And I want to take this time to say I really appreciate the city government and the county government for helping me do this thing. It went down as one of the best state conventions that we've had in the state of Kentucky in many, many years. But you know, the uniqueness of it, they kept telling me, in other words, Paducah, Kentucky, whether you know it or not, has been a role model for the whole state of Kentucky, even going as far as Frankfurt and Louisville and Lexington. Paducah was one of the very first communities to have African-Americans in key positions. And I never have forgot that because Paducah, they always took, of course, I got to give the credit to Curly Brown, which was the president of NAACP for many years, but the philosophy behind that is the fact that we always tried to keep an open-door policy with city government, county government, the police department, and the sheriff department. And we still have that philosophy. So I just think this here is a win-win for all of us. We worked hard to try to get that flag. I mean, you know, if it was just a small flag there on I-24, I don't think we would even have a problem. But we're talking about a flag that's 24 foot wide and 12 foot tall. I mean, this flag here, like Judge Clymer said, I mean, people, this, we're talking about a major highway that people pass by all the time and it makes Paducah, Kentucky looks bad. And you know, it makes JW Cleary and the Paducah NAACP look bad because of the fact that ain't nothing been done about it. But I tell them, I said, well, it's on private property. Well, we've even talked to attorneys to the point of whereas, how do you figure that that high in the sky that it could still be private property? So where do you cut off private property? And that's something that we're still working on because we feel like that that flag, that big Confederate flag shouldn't even be there, in a way of speaking. It's okay to have a park, but my God, don't have a dang thing where the whole world sees what's going on. So I just, I just really feel like that this would be a win-win for the Paducah, Kentucky and McCracken County. And you know, always in the past, I got to give Judge Clymer credit to the point of whereas, never in my lifetime that the county, county government have ever acted like they participated in what went on for his race relations in our state, in our, in our, in our city. But this, this man here has jumped out on limbs. I mean, we even, we really are making some strides because of the fact, I go back to what Fred Paxton and Curly Brown, WC Young, Robert Coleman, WG Harvey. In other words, I don't care what nobody say, if we're not working together as one, we'll never go to a high height. Whereas to me, working together as one, then the sky is the limit. Because God knows, we saw what Metropolis and Massac County went through. We don't want that in Paducah, Kentucky. So I say to you, I hope that each and every one of you all vote this thing as a positive. To me, it would be positive. We can't get rid of the flag, so at least, I just felt good about it from the very start. At least this would be a positive in the right direction. But we even, we even went as far as talking to the, to state government.
Mr. Cleary? I just wanted to just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have a three-minute time limit on public comment and we usually have it up on the screen and I'm sorry, we don't have it up right now, but I just wanted to let you know that's about your...
I really appreciate that. I didn't think that I went two minutes, but I guess I have. But that's all I want to say. I just want to say to city and county government that I just think this would be a win-win for McCracken County and Paducah, Kentucky because far as I'm concerned, we're all in this, and we're all in this thing together. Okay? Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you, JW.
I love you and every one of you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make some comments if I could, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. And thank you, Judge Clymer, for bringing this to the forefront. I think it's needed. We have good, I think excellent race relations in Paducah, McCracken County particularly. It's a great community to grow up in and we, we just have good relations and we do a lot of things together to support each other. But I think this, the flag just creates a divisiveness between the races, or at least the perception of it, here in Paducah. And as was said, 47,000 vehicles per day drive by there and people notice it from different parts of the country. And when we spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to recruit employers and businesses to have a better quality of life for our people and more job opportunities to support themselves and their families, I think this is working against that effort. It makes our job a little bit tougher because of the perception it gives of our community. Companies don't want to go to a community that they feel like where there might be some bias, some prejudice, some divisiveness among the races and they don't want to show up. And that demonstrates too much, I think, right there flying front and center. When I was on the city commission before, I had a resolution that we all passed unanimously condemning the flag and urging it to be taken down. I called the Kentucky Attorney General to see what, if anything, could be done. There is right. Everyone's right. There's nothing we can do. So I think this sends a positive counter message to let the world know that passes our, by our doorstep every day that we're inclusive, we're open, we're a loving community, we support each other, our races have a great relationship, and everyone's welcome. And so I think this emblem will go a long ways in demonstrating that and I think it's a very positive step forward for Paducah and McCracken County, showing unity together and working together and cooperating for a good cause. So I support it fully and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on it and bring it to you tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Any other commissioners have any comments tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about the other flag, the flag that's going to be, that's proposed to be displayed on the water tower. I am absolutely all about unity. I think the words that's been spoken here by everybody, I think the majority of the people in this county and surrounding region can agree with that. As most of you know, I have a very strong feelings toward the flag from, from the Star Spangled Banner and how it was pinned and what motivated that song Francis Scott Keyda to write down to Christmas Attics, the first person killed in this, to establish this great nation that we have. When we talk about symbols, particularly that symbol, the flag is perfect. Those of us who try to do what we do, we sometimes fall short. And that's, and that's where we are in this country. Under that flag, the flag stands where everybody will be treated equally, but it's up to individuals to carry that out. So when we start talking about, when we start using that, we're going to use that emblem to simplify the unity here in this county, then a couple of things I just had to look up. There's the United States Code Title 4, Chapter 1, under the flag, and these are the respect for the flag, the very flag that we're talking about using. The laws were supplemented by executive orders and presidential proclamations. It talked about in Section 8, respect for the flag, G. The flag should never have placed upon it, nor on any part of it, nor attached to it any mark, insignia, letter, word, figure, design, picture, or drawing of any nature. Now, some people will not agree with that and that's fine. That's their opinion. When we're talking about our flag, the United States flag, the Star Spangled Banner, there is a level of respect that we have to give to that, to that symbol. The architect, the artist's rendering, and I said this to Judge Clymer, the artist's rendering, I think it's, I think it's wonderful except for a minor adjustment. They stick their hands, interlocked hands, and move it underneath a few inches. Folks driving down a highway at 60 miles an hour at its present state will look up and they can't distinguish the flows of the waves in the back. What they'll see, there's... What they'll see, there's, what they will see is a black and white hand through the United States flag. Let's drop that down, and the message, I think the message will speak for itself. So that's my comments on the proposed minister board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does anyone else have any comments or discussion about this item?
Mayor, if I could, if I could just address that, I had several renditions of the flag, and I, and I agree completely with Commissioner Abraham. No disrespect to the flag should be shown in any way. And so that is why the final design was the flag flowing, or the furrows in the flag showing movement in the flag, and the static nature, non-movement in the hands in front of the flag. I don't, I sent you the final artwork, I don't know if it can be displayed or not.
I saw it, Judge.
But, of course, this, this.
Did you get it all, Judge? I, I don't think I've got, I haven't gotten it.
Oh. Now, you know, I'm, you could say I'm not a technological wizard. Mayor, back me up on that, maybe? I think I've got a picture of it here on my, my phone.
I actually, I actually have it, Judge. I was gonna share a presentation with you all at the end of this conversation, and it's at the beginning of my presentation, so let me share my screen.
Well, there's a.
Or you can just hold it up, that works too.
Yeah, there it is. So you see the movement of the flag and the arms and hands, static or still, which I believe, and I believe when you blow that thing up by 200, and put it on that water tower, it becomes apparent that the arms are out in front of the flag in the foreground, with the flag being behind the arms, just as my flag's behind me, and Commissioner Abraham, yours is behind, behind you. Certainly don't want anything to be on, drawn, sold, or anything else on the flag. And I, I did also have the county attorney to research that US Code and that flag etiquette, and I've known him a long time.
I bet you have.
That was, that was pretty good. Him being my son. And so I know him well enough to know that if there was something wrong with that artwork, he certainly would tell me and would make something different. But I guess the gist of it is, is somebody looking at that flag with those two hands, the black and the white shaking in front of it, the flag flowing in the back with the "United We Stand," both the U and the S, the U above the S as in both us and as United I just think it would be a stretch for somebody to believe that that is showing disrespect for the flag. Well, that was the artwork that we landed on. The, the, the hands being underneath the flag, I think is not as powerful, doesn't denote the message as strongly as what, what this artwork does. But I, I certainly understand your position.
Well, Judge, just to, just to comment on your statement, that, that is not a, obviously it's not a digital flag, so those, those waves, those stripes are not moving. When I sit and when I looked at your picture on your, on your phone, I'm, I'm looking at it, and it gives the appearance that those arms are across in front of the flag. Now, putting it, putting it underneath is, is a message that that symbol actually symbolizes, that, that we're all one nation under that flag. When we go, and I don't have to tell you, when we go to war, or we go to represent the United States, we're doing that under that flag. So, some people will, don't think it's a big deal, not saying that, that you think that. But what I'm saying is, some people, what difference does it make? Well, I think it makes a difference. I think it sends a message, a strong message of unity, black and white, but it also reemphasizes the meaning of that Star Spangled Banner.
I think Commissioner McElroy had a comment as well.
Yeah, just a, a quick comment. I, I, those flags bother me, they have bothered me for years, and I think this is an attempt to try to neutralize them. I'm not sure that it really will neutralize them, it will make a positive statement, but what we can't do is let that, that think that takes care of things. It's really important how we treat one another, and that's what people are gonna know the most about our community. I think it was St. Francis Assisi that said, "Preach the gospel at all times, when necessary, use words." And I just want that to be the predominant thing our community is known, as far as one that we reach out and we care for one another. We're not relying just on signs, and, and those are good things, when necessary, use words. But don't forget the important thing, and that is to make a difference in each other's lives, whatever our background is, however we walk on this earth.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm actually gonna piggyback on what you just said, and I would love the opportunity tonight to, to take what Judge Clymer and Commissioner Watkins on the Paducah Water Board and JW have started, and to ask this community if we could just dive a little deeper into the conversation. And I want to share a few things with you all in an effort to do that before we take our formal vote. I'm gonna pull up my, hopefully I'm gonna pull up my presentation that I had put together. I'm not normally technologically challenged, but for some reason I am in this exact moment, so hang on one second.
You don't make Tom happy?
I think I'm gonna need your help. Okay, hang on, guys, stick with me. Does anyone else have any comments they wanna fill the air with? While I'm doing this, it'll be like 10 seconds. I think I got it that time. All right, I got it, everyone. I also have puppies in the background, so I apologize. I just begged my friend, my neighbor, to come over and take them, so you all don't have to hear them. But this won't last very long, I'm not trying to take up everyone's time tonight, but I, I just, since we're having the conversation, I wanted to take an opportunity to share a little bit about the things I've learned this year, and to really challenge us to think about, what does it truly mean to be united? And more importantly, what does it truly mean to be inclusive? As Commissioner McElroy mentioned, symbols are a great starting place, right? They remind us of our intentions, they remind us of the effort needed, and I guess what I'm gonna ask tonight is, can, can this be the starting place of reminding us that we have a lot of work to do? And I wanted to start by honoring Commissioner Coleman, because I saw this post by Zana Rintfro, and it reminded me of me. And I guess if Commissioner Coleman were here with us, I'd hope he'd say the same thing that he said to Zana. And he, and she says in this post, "It was a sad day to lose Robert Coleman. And when she was a 32-year-old elected city commissioner, Bob always reminded people who ignored her useful opinions to listen, because she represented the Paducah citizens who were our future." And that's what I'm hoping tonight I can share with this commission and this body and those who are watching and listening, is the things that I've learned this year, and also the future that I hope that we are setting the stage for in Paducah. As you all know, in June, we hosted community conversations throughout the month of June. We had over 50 participants. I know Commissioner McElroy and Commissioner Wilson were able to join some of those, and I actually promised every participant that I would send out a report from those conversations. And so I'm finalizing that, and I'll be letting that out next week when we get it finished. But I wanted to share a little bit of insight from that, just because I think it's important that oftentimes if we are not having lived experience, we sometimes don't recognize that other people are. And so I want to bring this to your awareness. A few of these quotes that people said on these calls with us, that, you know, it's not a reality until it's right in front of your face, until you're living that experience. And this was specifically talking about racism, and talking about prejudice, and talking about this issue of inclusiveness in our community. You know, this woman said, "I don't say anything sometimes, because if I say something, then I am the angry black woman who's speaking up." That's a lived experience by some of our neighbors, and we have to recognize that before I think we can get honest with how we solve for some of those prejudices. And then also, just lastly, you know, as much as I wanna get on my soapbox and go somewhere else, I need to start at home. That was a comment by someone on these calls that they recognized that we have work to do here in our own community. So I wanted to just talk quickly about the difference between diversity and inclusion as we think about how we can take action in our community. Now, the idea of diversity is really all about kind of the who and the what, who's sitting around the table, who's being recruited, who's being promoted. Oftentimes in our organizations, we'll ask ourselves how many people of color are represented in certain positions. But inclusion is different. Inclusion is the how we do the work. It is the behaviors that welcome and embrace diversity. It's the way that great leaders actually honor inclusion and take action around that. And so I believe that this group of people, the incoming city commission, the current fiscal court, JW and NAACP, want to do that. And I want to make sure that we don't miss this moment in challenging ourselves to take that action for real. This is just a quick graph I wanted to show you guys that I thought was really helpful in understanding that difference between diversity and inclusion. Diversity is kind of that count that we hold ourselves accountable to, how much representation of people of color are sitting on our boards, are being hired in key roles, are having leadership positions. And then inclusion is really about that experience, it's the lived experience of someone. Are they being a part of the team? Are they being respected and valued? Are they being heard? And that's the conversation I think we need to be having in our community. What does that part look like? What does inclusion look like for our community? And just to bring to your awareness, you know, kind of how we're still not doing so well when it comes to representation. In the state of Kentucky, about 85% of our population are white, and about 15% of our population are people of color. But in Paducah, we all know we have a very diverse community, and so 71% of our population in Paducah city limits is white, and 29% is represented by people of color. We have a very diverse community. But when we look at representation in our community, and we look at state and local leaders, that's the fiscal court, the city commission, our state House representatives, our state senate representatives, we only have one person of color coming in to this next office, and in fact, Commissioner Abraham, we only have one person of color sitting in a seat of elected leadership in Paducah, Kentucky, right now. I believe that needs to change, and I think we have to bring that to our awareness in order to do so. In education, we have a very diverse school of students. Our students are very diverse, but we're lacking teacher representation when it comes to people of color. Another area that can improve in our community. And what other roles should we be monitoring? I don't have data on these things, but just asking ourselves, should we be monitoring who's in leader, who's in leadership positions that are representative? City-appointed boards and commissions, leadership roles on community boards, top employers in those executive leadership positions? Where is the representation in our community? And then finally, this is the list, a partial list of the ideas that came out of those conversations in June. It's not the exhaustive list, and I won't read every one of them to you, but you can see that in June, there was a lot of good conversation of how we can improve inclusion in our community. Number one being, let's get intentional about putting people of color in leadership positions. Another idea was to encourage participation in the community leadership certificate. That's something that SG Carvell at MSU has been working on to make sure that all throughout our community were thinking about these issues. And then another idea that got a lot of support on these calls was around the, the role that churches play. And can we start to think about how our black and white churches come together to worship and pray? I, I remember someone reminded us that Dr. Keen said that 11 o'clock on Sunday is the most segregated hour in America. He's still right about that in Paducah, Kentucky. So I just share all this with you all to say, thank you, Judge, thank you for leading the way on the symbol. I am supportive of the symbol, I've told you that from day one. And I just ask us to get to work, and to do the deep work that needs to happen in order for us to make sure that when people do drive by and see that unity sign, that their lived experience is unity and inclusion. So thank you, to you all for listening, and I'll, I'll turn the floor over to anyone else that has any comment, or we can move on to vote.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
A couple of things. One, the talk is on the proposed water tower and the art rendering. I, I, I love the, I love the idea of unity, I, I totally do. I think if it's that important and to bring folks on board, we're talking about with the symbol, is to drop those hands underneath. I, I think it, I think it encompasses everything that the flag stand for. The walk is what you just put up. That's the hard part. That's the part where it's gonna take individuals getting out of our comfort zones, and maybe weeding, wading into some deep water to have those deep conversations. And like, I will agree with Commissioner McElroy, that's, that's where it has to start. So it, so I guess what I'm saying is, regardless of how I vote on this water tower, that what you, the graphics that you put up, and the testimonies that you, you got from those individuals, those are real. And these conversations that we're gonna have to have are gonna be real, and they're gonna have to happen when everybody can speak truthfully about how they're feeling. So, I, I wish we, we, we could split this up, because I, I think, and, and really, it is a split. Because once we can say something, but then we gotta walk it out. So, I, I think if, going back to the United States flag as a, as a, as a symbol of unity, which it is, I, I really don't understand why it would be a, a big deal to bring those hands underneath that flag, and the message is the same.
I just wanted to say, Mayor, I just wanted to, I failed to earlier, thank JW Cleary for his leadership as president of NAACP and in Paducah, McCracken County, and his lifelong effort to improve the lives of African Americans and white Americans in Paducah and McCracken County. He's done so much, probably as much as anyone, to improve race relations in Paducah and McCracken County. I just wanted to thank you, JW, for all you do for our community.
Commissioner, not Commissioner Clymer, Judge Clymer, since this is the first conversation that, you know, you've had with the full commission on this subject, is there movement here to have the, the full support and have Commissioner Abraham's support?
Well, it's the first conversation, because I was denied the opportunity to do so twice before.
No, sir, you can reach out to any commissioner at any time, so I don't think that that's an accurate statement, but can we focus on the, the topic?
I'm answering that topic.
Thank you.
I was, I made a formal request twice to appear before, or put this project on the commission, and it was denied. But, you know, I just really fear, as I said in my presentation, people, if we walk away from this, this meeting tonight, people are not gonna, I think, understand, and we're talking about our local people, who are gonna read in the paper, on TV, or whatever, are not gonna understand the intricacies of this, if this is not passed, that it was not passed because we need to walk the walk, not just talk the talk with the, with the symbol, and the graphs and the charts and that sort of thing. Certainly, this message is, is not the whole effort, it is only a symbol. There are two aspects. There's our local people, the citizens that live here and in this region, the other, those... The other, those 40,000 cars containing however many people that pass daily by this community. We did not have an opportunity to stop and talk to them and show them those Confederate flags do not represent our beliefs and our values. We have about five seconds at 70 miles per hour for them to see a symbol and say whatever they're going to say, isn't that interesting across from Confederate flags? And I just, I just think it's a strong, a strong point. I just do not understand the controversy. I do understand Commissioner Abraham's belief that the hands below the flag is more appropriate. We disagree on that. And so, I mean, I have the greatest respect for this city body as well as the individuals on it. I just, I just fail to see why this is difficult.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just going to say, Judge Klimmer, I don't really think there's been any controversy from us about it. We were just trying to determine if it was something that we should be voting on. I don't think that we have voted on the artwork on the water tower in the past. So it wasn't really controversial. It was just whether or not we should vote. Mostly what I've seen on it, I've read in the paper or seen on TV. I didn't get the artwork from you. If you sent it to me, I'd have, I'm sorry. I just, I didn't see it. It didn't come to me.
Well, I've sent it. I don't know that I sent it to the entire body. I know the mayor's seen it. And we discussed back and forth. She and I disagreed for, I guess, for a period of time. Took time to get redraft these things and that sort of thing. We had differences of opinions on the things. And I don't speak for the mayor, but I think I felt strongly about this final message, this final artwork. I don't know if I wore you out, Mayor.
It sounds like you are, you plan to leave the artwork as it is. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That's all I want to know about. Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, we need to call for the vote if that's the case. I just wanted to see if there was any room. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Abraham, go ahead. Then we're going to call for the vote.
Right before we vote. So Judge Klimmer, so what you're saying is you won't drop the hands beneath the flag?
I think I'll look for another alternative other than the water tower, likely. If that doesn't pan out, and the only way, I hear one voice saying the hands underneath, I guess we'll see where the vote is and I'll have to decide where from there. It's just, it's,
I would say this, I would say this. The county attorney did an extensive thorough study of flag adequate, looking at a number of court cases and rulings and state and federal laws. And all of us on the Paducah Water Works Board got a copy of that and I assume everybody read it. I did. And it was exhaustive research and there was nothing in this emblem that he could find that disrespects the flag or violates flag adequate in any way whatsoever. And Robert Borden, who is president of the Veterans of Foreign Wars here, I think is the organization. And my understanding is all the veterans groups here have seen it and approved of it. So if there were anything in there, this emblem to offend the flag, our veterans, our country, these people above all would have objected, but instead they are supporting. So I think that it does send the right message and I don't think it offends flag etiquette and I fully support it. Passed unanimously, Paducah Water Board, it's a political organization. Fiscal Court unanimously. So I support it.
We all had a chance to read the county attorney's opinion and I don't doubt that. I read that. I read it in the paper.
Yeah, that was, that was made public and Commissioner Watkins, there, it took, it took two minutes to pull up what I read to you guys about the respect of that emblem. We're talking about imagery. We're not talking about, it gives the appearance and this is what we're talking about. We talked about cars driving down the road at 60 miles an hour. This is, and so they're not going to be able to look up there and distinguish the waves in the background. And if you think that, and don't mean to be salty here, but if you think that someone that has put their life on the line, that has some very personal feelings about the flag and it being unhindered, looks up and sees that, may not take offense. I think we're fooling ourselves. So to keep everything away, what Judge wants to do it, is put those hands underneath. The message is clear. The flag etiquette is, according to what I just read, which is factual also. It's there. And then we start the work of what Mayor Harless talked about, putting together, actually sitting down with folks and putting that talk to action. So if it's, if we're going to put that, if we're going to leave it like it is, I think it's a couple of things. I think the folks that you talked to that was in agreeance with it, I think they were, they were more in agreeance with the idea that what you came up with Judge, and I totally agree with that. I'll say that 100 times. I agree with it. But I do not agree with the architectural rendering, with the art rendering of where the symbols are placed on the water tower.
All right. Well, it sounds like that is not going to budge. So I think we'll call the question and move forward with the vote and then we can go from there. City Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Oh, you're on mute, Commissioner McElroy.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, let me get back to my screen. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 3A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Extending Boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by Annexing Certain Property Lying Adjacent to the Corporate Limits of the City of Paducah and Defining Accurately the Boundary of Said Property to Be Included Within the Said Corporate Limits." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah hereby approves the consensual annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 3660 Olivet Church Road, containing .9284 acres, more or less."
So moved?
Second.
All right. We have, we heard this introduced last meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this agenda item before we take a vote? Okay, I hear none. So I'll ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to read item 3B.
"A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving a Professional Services Agreement Between the City of Paducah and Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated in an Amount of $89,180 for Engineering Services Related to the South 25th Street Improvement Project, authorizing the Engineering Department to exercise Option B for Engineering Services Related to the South 24th Street Improvement Project in the Amount of $70,595 and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and all documents related to same." "This ordinance authorizes and approves the execution of an agreement for engineering services related to the South 25th Street Improvement Project between the City of Paducah and Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated in an Amount of $89,180 and further authorizes the Engineering Department to exercise Option B as proposed by Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated for the South 24th Street Project in the Amount of $70,595."
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this item tonight? I do think it's, Rick, I wanted to ask you really quickly. I think you mentioned this last time. The 25th Street Project is funded by the state. This was the additional funding we received, I think, at the end of the Bevitt administration. Am I correct on this?
Yes, ma'am. We received $650,000 from the state's discretionary fund in 2019. And so this, although we don't have, we don't have a estimate on that project right now, that was the maximum we were going to be allocated for that. So we got the maximum that the governor was bringing to us.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this item? Okay, if there are none, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to read item 3C, please.
"A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving a Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for Engineering Services for Flood Control Pump Station 2 and 9 with HDR Engineering Incorporated to reflect an expanded construction administration and inspection scope and to increase the agreement in an amount of $81,500 for a new total agreement amount not to exceed $439,662 and authorizing the execution of said second amendment." "This ordinance approves the Second Amendment of the Professional Service Agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for an increase in the new amount of $81,500 for expanded construction administration and inspection services for flood control pump stations number 2 and number 9, resulting in a total agreement cost of $439,662."
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions tonight on this item?
If you haven't been in a pump station, you can't appreciate this.
That's true. Very true. All right. If no questions or comments for this, I will ask the city clerk to take roll, call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye, excuse me.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And moving on, I'll ask the city clerk to read item 4A, please.
"A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of Two Alleyes Extending West of Northview Street onto the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency Property Located at 621 Northview Street and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same." "This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of two alleys extending west of Northview Street onto the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency Property Located at 621 Northview Street and authorizes, empowers, directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city to the property owner in or abutting the public ways to be closed."
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. And Rick, do you want to give us an overview of this item?
Real quick, Mayor and Commissioner. Basically, when the treatment plant was built in 1957, the city just built it over property it owned and it had some right of ways there. When the JSA was formed in 1999, we quickly formed the JSA. The footprint of the plant itself is over these publicly owned properties. So this is just nothing more than just cleanup. Some of the things probably should have been done 20 years ago when the JSA was formed, but forming the agency and getting it up was more important than the property. So this basically makes for one single property line that goes around the treatment plant. So it's just, it's just some cleanup.
Great. Any questions for Rick's on this item? Not tonight? Okay. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. All right. We're going to move on to comments from the assistant city manager tonight. Michelle?
Hi. I do have a few things. So I did want to just make sure the community is aware that we are trying to be responsive to the governor's executive orders. So city services are still operating, but we have closed public facilities to the public. So you know, city hall, the police department lobby. But we are still conducting business by email and phone and we do have a drop-off box for payments and permits, that type of thing. Also, with Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday and Friday are city holidays. So I did want to let everyone know that residential garbage collection will not occur during those days. So Thursdays will occur tomorrow and Fridays will occur Monday. And then on Saturday, we do have the, there's no place like home or there's no place like local small business Saturday in downtown. And it will happen from 10:00 AM to 4:00 and we will have things like free carriage rides, live music and food trucks. But of course, we are still in a pandemic, so we will encourage, you know, social distancing and facial coverings, but want to support our local businesses as much as we can. And then finally, of course, like to pay our respects to longtime serving Commissioner Robert Coleman and his wife. We're thinking about his family. He really dedicated his life to public service and we're forever grateful for how he served this community.
Thank you, Michelle. Any commissioners have any comments tonight you'd like to make?
Yeah, I have, just to piggyback off of what Michelle was saying about Commissioner Coleman. When I was first elected back in 2000, it kind of talks a little bit about our community. When I would campaign and I would knock on doors, one of the things I heard quite often was, "Why am I trying to take Commissioner Coleman's seat?" And like, there's four seats. I could hear comments like, "Well, they're never going to allow two black men on the commission." So I would ask, "Who are they?" Well, we both got elected. And that was the first time in the history of the city that two men of color, particularly African American, was elected. And I learned so much from watching him. And he shared some age wisdom. And so we have pockets of individuals that think that Paducah may not have it all on the ball, but we have a majority of the people are willing to do what you were talking about, sitting down across the table and talking. So he left that legacy and I was honored to serve with him.
They gave me goosebumps. Thank you, Commissioner Abraham, for sharing that.
Beautiful.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Shop local and get carryout. Our business. Mask up and move on. I think that I've said that over and over and over. Wear your mask, move on. There are many ways that you can support our local businesses by ordering gift certificates. They'll put it at their front door. They'll deliver. They'll mail to you. You can pick up food. In fact, I'm probably going to do that just in a few minutes. So absolutely. To just say, Mayor Harless said I was on some of those calls with you this summer and heard a lot of very interesting comments and had a lot of great conversations. And I think everyone knows how much we support the diversity, inclusion, all of it. So thank you to JW for being on the call tonight. We appreciate their leadership. And Judge Klimmer, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Any other comments? Well, I just wanted to just briefly discuss kind of the work that we're doing. I know that Mayor-elect Bray is on the call with us tonight. I think he signed up to make a public comment. We have been working on making sure that the transition from this body to the next body is smooth. We want to make sure that the new commission is up to speed. Of course, they'll have Commissioner Wilson with the intellectual knowledge that she shares and the institutional knowledge about the city government. So I know that, you know, George and I have met already and we will continue to do so. I know that the city team, Michelle and Lindsay and whoever else is on here has been working very hard to put together an orientation for the new commission. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for taking that very seriously. I think the transition is important. I think in local government especially, this is a baton pass. I'm so thankful we are in nonpartisan seats where we can make transitions successful and build on what has been accomplished already. So if there are no further comments from the commissioners, I'm going to move into the audience comments. And I know Mayor-elect Bray has signed up, so I'll turn it over to you. And I know Mayor-elect Bray has signed up, so I'll turn it over to you. And we're gonna impose our three minutes, sir, because we do that to everyone else. So just to be fair, you can have the floor in January as long as you want it, but for tonight, we're gonna do the three minutes to be fair.
Thank you, Mayor. I assure you, I'll be done in three minutes. So I just wanted to thank the current commissioners for the opportunity just to sit in and listen. You know, this is, as Mayor said, this is a transition for us, so we have opened up the lines of communication and I'm thankful for that, as she is as well. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working with Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson and the three new commissioners that we have to join us all, two of which have been fighting COVID, many of you know. So I'm just here really to learn tonight and to listen and I guess, Mayor, see your leadership style, see how all this flows. And with your all's permission, I'll join the next couple of meetings as well. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
See, that was painful.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, everyone have a good evening. Take care. Happy Thanksgiving, yes.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys. Be safe.